All right, Attorney.
Good evening. The base please, Ross. The office of the county planning commission on the morning. Where's the guy?
Thank you, Tony. Call this meeting in order and thank you all for coming out even though it's been a cold and kind of nasty outside. So we will start with a prayer from Commissioner Yell.
What we pray is there any requests across the aisles? All right, let's pray. Well, we thank you for today. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for where we live and all of our friends and neighbors. Thank you for the folks we get to serve. Thank you for each one who serves so well, Lord, with the best of their ability. We pray that you be in the midst of our business tonight, Lord. We pray that you help us to always be thankful for what you've done for us. We thank you most of all for dying on the cross for a bunch of sinners like us. And we ask that you forgive us for where we fail you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Move on with the pledge of the flag, Commissioner Roach.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Looks like we've already done the roll call, so let's go forward with that.
Fourteen commissioners present and the county mayor.
Thank you. Conflict of interest take it. Attorney Allen Peck, please.
Commissioners Roach, Commissioners Britton wish to acknowledge that they may have an actual or potential conflict with matters that may be coming before the board, the mission, this meeting, this meeting, and they agree to act accordingly. Commissioner Roach, do you so agree?
Aye, sir.
Commissioner Britton, do you so agree?
Aye, sir.
Thank you. All right, move on to commendations and recognitions. Jamie Miller had sent out an email to all of the volunteer fire departments to come and be with us this evening if they so wish. And I see Curtis being in the back. Curtis, we appreciate you coming. Got a little thank you to them at the request of Commissioner Alvis. So to all volunteer firefighters, thank you for all that you do, no matter the challenges that face you, you find a way to respond to those in need. Thank you for continued commitment to your community. 2024 was a long and tumultuous year for most, both on the job and off, yet somehow, some way, you've still managed to find a way to respond repeatedly to those in need. Thank you. Thank you for putting your lives on hold and missing family functions, holidays, soccer practices, and doctor's appointments. Thank you for putting yourself in danger on a continuous basis, whether it be running into a burning building, directing traffic, climbing ladders, crawling into a confined space, moving through a hostile environment, or driving into Mother Nature. We thank you for that. Thank you for attending your umpteenth public education event. You do a great job relating the information to the children and young adults so that they can be safer with their decisions. Your instruction may have just saved a life. Again, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to go over training in your off time, making sure that everyone understands how to properly search a room. What's very easy to you may be difficult to others. Thank you for giving a little more even when you're tired. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you for sitting with New Window on scene. They weren't planning on this moment, and you were there to give them your shoulder. Your compassion made the situation a little bit easier to bear. Thank you for striving to stay current on the many training opportunities offered. Firefighting changes like the calendar and staying up to date on new information makes us better. Keep up the good work. Thank you for coming back to work after that difficult call. You saw the worst, you helped, and it didn't go as you planned. You came back. Please make sure that you are the available resources at your disposal to assist you. Thank you for giving yourself to a volunteer opportunity that has high risk and no salary. You could have done something else, but you chose to help others. Tip of the cap to you. Thank you for volunteering, not just for all the calls, but all the training, public education events, post-testing, hydrant maintenance, budgeting, vehicle checks, station cleaning, and beyond. You leave your home, your family, at a moment's notice, never knowing exactly when you'll be back. Thank you to all your families for enduring the challenges that came with your service to others. For dedication to complete strangers, make sure that you thank them. Thank you for being who you are. The fire service has faced many challenges, and you are here to keep it going day in, day out. You are influencing future leaders and future firefighters. We thank you from the Hawkins County Commission. Anybody else have any other commendations, recognitions?
But, Mayor, I'd like to recognize Daddy Yell, he did me for the good job they did during the snow. He did a fantastic job.
All right. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate you. Any other commendations or recognitions? On the office reports, I've got the following that need to be read into the minutes, please. Hawkins County Circuit, Hawkins County Circuit, general sessions and juvenile courts, annual financial reports for the year end of December 31st, 2024. Hawkins County Court, general ledger, financial report fiscal year 2025, period ending 12/31/2024. The appointment of J.R. South as Commissioner of Pershing Utility District of Hawkins County, Tennessee, for a term commencing March 1st, 2025, and ending midnight February 28th, 2029. The appointment of Shane Smith as Commissioner of Pershing Utility District, Hawkins County, for a term commencing March 1st, 2025, and ending midnight February 29th, 2029. Policy and Procedure Manual for the clerk and master's office, Hawkins County, Tennessee. Hawkins County trustee's office fund report, financial summary report, July 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Hawkins County mayor's office balance sheets and summary financial statements, all funds, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. And Hawkins County mayor's office balance sheets and summary financial statements, all funds, July 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2024. Any other committee or office reports?
Second quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Oh. I put it on the, yes.
Second quarter.
Sorry. I put it on the card.
Okay. Second, here we go. Hawkins County Department of Education Quarterly Revenue and Expenditure Report, Matt Hickson, Director, 2024-25, second quarter. Got you. Anybody else?
Sheriff Wonder reports that he is one of our simple.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Any other office or committee reports? All right, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion that we approve? Motion from Commissioner Britton, Second Commissioner Gibson. Please vote on your passion, unless there's any discussion. Yeah. All right.
Fourteen, yes.
All right, thank you. Minus from the last meeting. Moves us down to public comments, and I've got a list here of three people. Brian Page, come on up. 2025-01-01 is what he wants to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. My wife, Lynn, and I, we both wanted to come down and show our support for a resolution. It's 2025-01-01 in opposition to the Freedom of Education Act. That's 01... 02. Oh, out of order, 01. Okay. Yeah. So we just wanted to resonate that we do support that resolution. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Dan Tizem, come on up.
Good evening. I wrote my thoughts down on the cards so I can stay straight here. This has to do with the outward resolution in opposition to the Freedom of Education Act, the House bill. You know, I started not knowing at all how to have an opinion on this, and I saw that on a lot of different public forums, the opinions were very fuller and wide-ranging. A lot of people have different ideas, and it's a good thing. Iron sharpens iron, so I'm glad that this is called a big public discussion. I'd like to say that the theme behind this bill is on parents have the choice to choose the educational path of their children, should not be obligated to utilize public schools that have lost, that they have lost trust in. Of course, this is already the case, though. Parents have the choice to utilize private education or homeschooling if they so choose. It's not a rule that says they have to go to public schools. That being said, I'd like to be more specific as to what the great idea in this bill is, which is the task paying parents who do not support public schools should have the choice to utilize their tax dollars towards the education of their children in the way they see fit. It should not be burdened to pay taxes toward public schools they aren't utilizing or using plus paying for the separate private education of their own children. Instead, automatically extorting parents for funding towards public schools, the intent to return those funds to the people so they can use them by their own accord is a golden idea and as American as any other. The problem with this bill, though, and why I would advise that our public and its representation do not support it are as follows. The funding that has been attached to this bill acting as a somewhat liberal blackmail for its support and the nature in which it is being rushed through is a large red flag. I don't know if people are aware, there's a lot of funding for other funding that's not applicable at all to the school, the schooling that's attached to this bill. It can be argued pretty easily, though. It's almost a blackmail. You need to pass this through, and maybe you'll get this money then. The vague language of the bill that invites potential government overreach into private and homeschooling curriculums, this is something that I think a lot of homeschooling parents were concerned about, and maybe the idea of getting the money was a plus, but the potential for government to then interfere with what they have to do with the private schools and the private sector could be very problematic. The ridiculous policy that public schools would be compensated at the same rate even when their enrollment drops, so taxpayers will be paying double for however many students utilize these vouchers. This would provide no incentive for public schools to perform better when the enrollment they lose has no effect on their funding. Double dipping is just common sense. It's fiscally irresponsible to put that burden on taxpayers.
Give you about thirty more seconds, Danny.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that. In closing, I'd say, in its current form, this bill is not good, and we should not settle for one good idea paired with a ton of negative baggage. When a single-issue bill is presented for school vouchers that clearly blocks government interference in private or homeschooling, I would hope that you would support it. But for now, this bill is not worthy of a yes-dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Randy Patterson, Planning Commission.
Good evening. I'm Randy Patterson. I'm a membership candidate. I'm a Hawkins County citizen. I'm here to verbally offer the position and appointment commission that is offered. I feel like it's best to do it verbal, except any questions you want ever, that is offered two weeks ago, so we're going to do it verbal. I have owned a business for over forty years, split land, buy my land, meet with the state, county, and officials in how to go about it, what to do. It is a very complicated, serious matter. I feel like I bring a lot to the table, knowledge, common sense, and also of study. That is pretty well what I have to offer. I've listened to several people from the state, member. We have owned a very successful business without any kind of signs or anything. There's more to splitting property doing than people think. The commission has a tough job, and why anybody would volunteer for it, I have no idea. I don't know why, but anything I can do to service my county, and I feel like this is the right position that I can be of benefit and an asset to this county to further it and to make it better for us. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. That's it. I've been married fifty-one years, next month. That's the pitch lane. So, if anybody got any questions, feel free to ask, and we'd be glad to answer. I took several classes. I've even attended classes at DPSU, on grammar, blueprint reading. They form this land, man, there when you start to buy it. It's soil science, and several different elements you have to deal with from county and state. And I have dealt with those people, and I feel like I could be an asset to the county.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, question for you before you leave the front. I had talked to Commissioner Barrett, who said he wanted to put your name into consideration, but this commission had asked for resumes and information prior to the meeting, so that's what we went by, and he said that you declined to provide a resume. Is that the case?
That is not the case. It is the case and not the case. I have the text. I asked for a phone call rather than text. I told him I would be more than glad to meet with him, give him all whatever he needed. I would be glad to come to the mayor's office and sit down and do an interview to full extent, so if you had any questions, I could answer. I have done a complaint, you can write down your values or what you'd up to offer to somebody in this situation. There's a lot more to it than just writing, "I can do this, I can do that, I can do this." I think you can get a better feeling of a person, and you also have to have questions if you're going to put somebody in a position like this. It's a very important position both ways, and I feel like you can do it better by giving your resume like this, when you set yourself up, you know, for anything. But I'll say, there was more texts went out asking for a phone call to wind it up the city. I couldn't get that phone call back. There's a phone call went to my other district, too, and I'm not going off on anybody. I didn't get a return phone call. So what am I to do? If your commissioner, if your commissioner in your district won't answer your phone, what do you... And I don't expect it to answer right then, but I expect to answer another day or two. But if you don't get that, and you're going to send another text three, four days later, and you still don't get a return call, what do you do?
Okay. Well, I'm going by the state requirement that I appoint the person, and this commission says yes or no to that person. I didn't get anything from you in time to get it out to the commission. I was just told that you weren't going to provide a resume. That's what I was told.
You didn't get the home store.
Okay. Well, I apologize.
I'm sorry, and I'm not trying to throw those stones at nobody.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's not what we're here for.
Right.
And really, you know, I'm here to volunteer because of the system to do better and go forward, and that's what it's all about. You haven't got anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else with a public comment? Okay, we'll move on. 2025-01-01, Commissioner Roach.
Mr. Mark Dewitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission Railroad Station, met this 27th of January, 2025. Resolution in reference appointment to the Hawkins County Planning Commission for a four-year term, whereas each district of the Hawkins County Planning Commission is to have representation, and whereas several commissioners were reappointed at the December 2024 commission meeting, can are listed below. Whereas District Two Representative John Hitsen elected not to be reappointed last month, resulting in an opening on the commission in that district. Now therefore, be it resolved that Timothy L. Linderfeld, a resident of District Two in Hawkins County, be appointed to the planning commission for the remainder of the four-year term, ending November 30th, 2028. The complete list of commissioners now being District One Garrett White through November 30th, 2027; District Two Timothy L. Linderfeld through November 30th, 2028; District Three Thomas Hicks through November 30th, 2028; District Four Lynn Norris through November 30th, 2025; District Five Steve Nelson through November 30th, 2025; District Six Charles Brooks through November 30th, 2026; District Seven Mike Lacy through November 30th, 2027; E911 Representative Donna Hitter through November 30th, 2027; Matt Lard's member Edwin Coe through November 30th, 2028; Road Superintendent Danny Jones, termed to correspond with respect to term in office; non-voting members, termed to correspond with respect to term in office; county mayor; chairman of the county industrial development board; and stormwater runoff officer. Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
Got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Gibson. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if Mr. Linderfeld here? Okay. I think I'm going to do this right, so just bear with me. Mr. Chairman, I move to divide the question by separating District Two Timothy L. Linderfeld and voting on that separately. That requires a second, but that resolution is not available.
Okay. Basically, that's what this resolution does, because everybody else is already appointed.
Okay. Fair enough. In that case, I would like to at least consider, Mr. Patterson, and I'll tell you why, however procedurally we need to do that. Because I feel like if you want to raise your hand and say, "I want to try to serve the community in a position such as planning commission," you know, I'd like to send at least a shot to be able to do that. Mr. Patterson has been involved in the Outlaw Committee. He worked for free up until a time when he couldn't handle longer, and he has a pretty good reason for why he couldn't continue in that. And I would like to just consider him as well. He asked to serve. He may not win a vote between himself and Mr. Linderfeld, but I'd like to at least have that option.
Well, the clarification on that is there is no vote between the two of them, because the mayor, the mayor presents the candidate, and the commission approves or disapproves. Okay?
Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Gibson.
Thank you, Mark. Just for tax catch and purposes, I did receive a call from Mr. Patterson that I had missed the call, and I sent Mr. Patterson a text message, and I kind of, just for, you know, clarification purposes, kind of bring this transaction back and forth to the people and to the commissioners. The text message says, "This is from me to Mr. Patterson." It said, "Hello, Randy. Sorry I missed your call earlier. Could you provide the resume that I hit forward to the county mayor for consideration of the planning commission open?" Randy texted back, and he says, "When do you need it?" I replied, "I would say pretty soon, so that the mayor could have it for consideration. The commission will meet on the 27th, and should vote on filling the vacancy then." Randy Patterson texted me back, and he says, "When you get time, can you tell me in the next few days?" I responded back to the text. I said, "Mr. Patterson, good tomorrow will be good for you." And then Mr. Patterson texted me back. He says, "Jeff, I would be glad to answer any questions of you or any of Commissioner Hacks. I know all of you pretty good, and you all know me as well. No one I know has ever done a written resume for a community position. I know when I go to the election poll, I don't see a written resume, but I see names like the past years, for example, you. I just vote. Sorry to bother you and take up your time. I would not be doing a written resume, but open to any questions anyone may have, and I will stand upon my background and credit for that. I have been blessed enough to help this great county develop. Thanks for your time. I still remain available to help our county in any way I can. Have a good night." And that is the end of the text messages back and forth between me and Mr. Patterson. That's, you know, that's, that's the text. I just, you know, spit that out there. So, you know, if there's any misunderstanding, that's what I went off of.
Okay. And I understand that resume hasn't been required before, but this commission is the one that asked me to have resumes. And...
I don't... Ask me?
Yes.
I don't know what the rules is about, you know, viewing the commission and how it works. I've been unfortunate, or been fortunate enough that we've all had it been moved. I haven't been around the commission like I was to know that there's a doubt, you know, the rule. But you'll notice during this text message, what Jeff read out is exactly right, but the meaning is mature or no. I would only have a phone call if I had a person to person, not text to text, and I was willing to do anything as far as come to your office in my time, hour, half a day, whatever it took, to give you a deep resume and a better resume than I could ever put on paper, because I guarantee you, if I wrote a resume out on paper, you're going to have questions about my resume, and I won't be able to answer. But if I'm there in person presenting while I'm chairing my time, then I feel like you would get a better feel and know my knowledge and my understanding, and I know it will take up your time, but it would take up your time just reading a piece of paper and being left with questions more than it would if me and you were having a conversation.
I don't disagree with that. The only thing is, this commission has directed me to get written resumes.
Then I wouldn't explain, say, if I'd been explaining it had to be in that, is only being considered, then I probably would have. I'm not saying I would have, because I saw it was easy, but I would have probably wrote one out, because volunteering for a job like that is, you know, there's no money involved enough for anybody to be on.
Hey, there's fifty dollars a month involved.
You know, I know. It's time, and I know that from the Outlaw Committee all the way up. I realize that if you never serve, don't say nothing to nobody, no commissioner, no nothing, because of the time that you all put in, this committee people put in, they need a pat on the back most of the time just to somebody saying something about them, in my opinion.
Okay.
But that's mine. I deserve a phone call back. I asked for it. I called my other commission. Still no phone call. I don't know what to do. I guess they'll learn, and the waiting time comes, they'll get a resume, though. It will be four years. That's, that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Let's move on. Commissioner Trent.
It was my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that all candidates for committees and things in the future were to be present when we were voting on it. Is that correct?
I don't think that was ever said, but it may have been, and I missed it.
Anybody else remember that? No?
I finally remember. It retained money they hadn't been present yet.
Right.
And they really should be present, Commissioner, to see it. I don't know why the other gentleman's not here, but he certainly should be. And Randy, I thank you for willing to serve. Mayor, did you say you paid fifty dollars a month for a meeting?
Fifty dollars a meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Yell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of clarifications. So I actually wanted to reach out to Randy and ask him to be here tonight, so I was under the understanding that we wouldn't be able to vote on the floor, so I apologize to you, Mayor. I have misunderstood that in terms of the procedure behind it. Number two, the reason that I...
District seven, Mike Lacy through November 30, 2027. E-911, Representative Donna Hittler through November 30, 2027. Matt Barnes, Member Edwin Coe through November 30, 2028. Road Superintendent Danny Jones, Term to Correspond with respect to term in office. Non-voting members, Term to Correspond with respect to term in office. County Mayor, Chairman of the County Industrial Development Board, and Stormwater runoff officer. Mr. Chairman, I move.
Got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Gibson. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if Mr. Linderfeld here? I don't think I'm going to do this right, so just bear with me. Mr. Chairman, I move to divide the question by separating District two Timothy L. Linderfeld and voting on that separately. That requires a second, not a vote.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was that?
It's a move to divide the question to separate District two Timothy L. Linderfeld from the resolution. Because, okay, so to vote on that separately, and it's, it requires a second, but that resolution's not available.
Okay, basically, that's what this resolution does because everybody else is already appointed.
Okay, fair enough. In that case, I would like to at least consider Mr. Patterson, and I'll tell you why. However procedurally we need to do that. Because I feel like if you want to raise your hand and say, "I want to try to serve the community in a position such as planning commission," you know, I'd like to send at least a shot to be able to do that. Mr. Patterson has been involved in the Outlaw Committee. He worked for free up until a time when he couldn't anymore. And he has a pretty good reason for why he couldn't continue in that. And I would like to just consider him as well. He asked to serve. He may not win a vote between himself and Mr. Linderfeld, but I'd like to at least have that option.
Well, the clarification on that is there is no vote between the two of them. Because the mayor, the mayor presents the candidate and the commission approves or disapproves. Okay? Is that all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Gill, very.
Thank you, Mark. Just for clarification purposes, I did receive a call from Mr. Patterson that I had missed the call. And I sent Mr. Patterson a text message, and I kind of, just for, you know, clarification purposes, kind of bring this transaction back and forth to the people and to the commissioners. Text message says, this is from me to Mr. Patterson. Said, "Hello, Randy. Sorry I missed your call earlier. Could you provide the resume that I hit forward to the county mayor for consideration of the planning commission open?" Randy texted back, and he says, "When do you need it?" I replied, "I would say pretty soon," so that the mayor could have it for consideration. The commission will meet on the 27th and should vote on filling the vacancy then. Randy Patterson texts me back, and he says, "When you get time, can you call me in the next few days?" I responded back to the text. I said, "Mr. Patterson, good tomorrow will be good for you." And then Mr. Patterson texted me back. He says, "Jeff, I would be glad to answer any questions of you or any other Commissioner hacks. I know all of you pretty good, and you all know me as well. No one I know has ever done a written resume for a community position. I know when I go to the election poll, I don't see a written resume, but I see names like the past years, for example, you. I just vote. Sorry to bother you and take up your time. I would not be doing a written resume, but open to any questions anyone may have, and I will stand upon my background and credit for that. I have been blessed enough to help this great county with all of this. Thanks for your time. I still remain available to help our county in any way I can. Have a good night." And that is the end of the text messages back and forth between me and Mr. Patterson. That's, you know, that's, that's the text. I just, you know, put that out there. So, you know, if there's any misunderstanding, that's, that's what I went off of.
Okay, and I understand that resume hasn't been required before, but this commission is the one that asked me to have resumes.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the rules is about, you know, viewing the commission and how it works. I've been unfortunate, or I've been fortunate enough that we've all never had a vote. I haven't been around the commission like I was to know the reason that I was, you know, the rule. But you'll notice during this text message, what Jeff read out is exactly right, but the meaning is mature or no. I would only have phone calls if I were person to person, not text to text. And I was willing to do anything as far as come to your office in my time, hour, half day, whatever it took, to give you a complete resume and a better resume than I could ever put on paper. Because I guarantee you, if I wrote a resume out on paper, you're going to have questions about my resume, and I won't be able to answer. But if I'm there in person presenting while I'm chairing my time, then I feel like you would get a better feel and know my knowledge and my understanding. And I know it will take up your time, but it would take up your time just reading a piece of paper and being left with questions more than it would if me and you were having a conversation.
I don't disagree with that. The only thing is, this commission has directed me to get written resumes.
Then I wouldn't explain, say, if I'd been explaining it had to be in that is only being considered, then I probably would have. I'm not saying I would have. But I saw it was easy. But I would have probably wrote one out, because volunteering for a job like that is, you know, there's no money involved enough for anybody to be on.
Hey, there's fifty dollars a month involved.
You know, I know. It's time. And I know that from the Outlaw Committee all the way up. I realize that if you never serve, don't say nothing to nobody, no commissioner, no nothing, because of the time that you all put in, these committee people put in, they need a pat on the back most of the time just to somebody saying something about them, in my opinion.
Okay.
But that's mine. I deserve the phone call back. I asked for it. I called my other commission. Still no phone call. I don't know what to do. I guess they'll learn when the waiting time comes. They'll get a resume, though. It will be. That's, that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Let's move on. Commissioner Trent.
It was my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that all candidates for committees and things in the future were to be present when we were voting on it. Is that correct?
I, I don't think that was ever said, but it may have been, and I missed it.
Anybody else remember that? No?
I, I finally remembered. It retained money they hadn't been present.
Right.
And, and they really should be present, Commissioner Gill. I don't know why the other gentleman's not here, but he certainly should be. And Randy, I thank you for willing to serve. Mayor, did you say fifty, you paid fifty dollars a month for fifty dollars a meeting?
Fifty dollars a meeting, yes. Fifty dollars a meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple of clarifications. So, I actually wanted to reach out to Randy and ask him to be here tonight, so I was under the understanding that, that we wouldn't be able to vote on the floor. So, I apologize to you, Mayor. I, I have misunderstood that in terms of the procedure behind it. Number two, the reason that I reached out to Randy is, as you get into the planning commission, and you talk to people who deal with that, who are developing land, we need people on that commission, on the planning commission, who have done development. And it's very, very important that they have that experience. Listen, I, I love college degrees. I love accolades. I love all that stuff. That's great. But, you know, it's one thing if you're taking a surgeon. You wouldn't want the one necessarily that had read the book about it. You'd want the one who'd done it for years. That could help you a whole lot more. And I think that is true in this case. And, you know, Mr. Patterson, I have known him a decent amount of time. I know he had done it. So, that's why I reached out to him, because I think that experience is important. One, and I'm not saying the other gentleman doesn't have this mindset, but an important mindset that you get when you do things such as development, you start looking at, "How can we do things rather than why we can't?" That is an important, that is a very different perspective that we need to have when it comes to folks that have as much power over development as the planning commission does. If there's a reason that we can't, okay, if there's a procedure or a reason that we can't do something, okay, maybe that's, that's why we can't, but how can we do it? How can we work with developers and develop this county? We, it's no secret, anybody sitting up here, we need tax revenue. We need, we need a broader tax base. And the way we do that is through development. And we need experienced developers that are willing to serve on the planning commission. I do believe Mr. Patterson or someone of similar background would add value to the planning commission. And that was my reason for bringing him here tonight, and I appreciate you coming, and I apologize for the mix-up, and I understand another rules. I apologize about that.
All right. Is that all? Commissioner Gill?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thacker.
Mr. Mayor, could we not amend this resolution by putting Mr. Linderfeld's name and Randy Patterson's name out? He let us vote on it.
No, that, you know, I, I would love to be able to do that, but that would be in violation of the state, you know, you have to do, planning commission members. Mr. Gibson.
I just want to call a question.
All right, question's been called.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak. I press this button ten minutes.
All right, go ahead.
You've got a nominee that we didn't have a choice in who's nominated. And yet you come to us and ask us to approve this committee. If I don't have a say who his nominee is that's going to be on that committee, you don't need me. I don't, if I can't vote for her, you know, why bring it to me to vote on it?
I asked the commissioners from District two.
And I'm aware of the fact that I was the man that asked for a brief biography when we voted on committees. But I'm going to take it right now. I'm going to sit here tonight. You can't make me vote. And I'm going to ask our fellow committee members not to vote. And, and you can postpone it to another time, move the table, somebody can, I'm not going to. And it's nothing personal. I just think if I'm going to vote on something, I should have a choice in who is nominated to be on these committees that you bring in here. At least have a choice to stand up and, and add to the nomination.
Okay. Questions, questions have been called, so we're going to go ahead and...
Hello, Mayor. I'm not just speaking.
Question's been called, Ian. Question's been called.
So, I, I asked my fellow commissioners. Hey, I was told when I came in here, no disrespect to Mr. Chairman up here, Mr. DeWitt, but I'm going to ask if we don't vote on it. I, I was told that the county commissioners run this county, and the mayor takes his instructions for what we want to do.
By most things, yes.
Am I wrong?
By most things, yes, Mr. Palmer.
So, let's take a stand, okay? And then we'll work this out. Somebody wants to say a little later, let's do that. I think we need to postpone it to another time, and let's work this out in committee or something.
Well, I think one of the things you ought to be aware of is the statute of working members of state staff as far as who does the nomination and then the committee commission voting on that same. So, you have a choice of who you're going to put on there, whether you're going to vote them in or not, but it is the mayor's program, the statute, to do the nominations.
Do you need our votes? You can do that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We have any other further discussion questions have been called. Let's go ahead and vote.
Five yes, eight no, one abstain.
Okay. Motion has not passed. We'll have another...
I'd like to change mine to no. I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. May I do that?
Once it's been announced, you know, I don't believe you can, but it's...
Anything changes, vote any time during the meeting.
I want to change it after, 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 after. Anyway, I...
I was thinking it's good to know anyway, so it's a moot point. It's a moot point. All right, that resolution fails, and we'll come up with another nomination for next motion. And that, it's going to be, it's going to be another, I have to nominate and you all have to approve. So, we'll go from there. Twenty, yeah.
May I make a correction?
Sure.
Mr. Patterson, the phone number is two seven six eight eight four two.
Twenty twenty five oh one oh two, introduced by Commissioner Palmer.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman of the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, that's the twenty seventh day of January twenty twenty five. The resolution requests that the hundred and fourteen session of the Tennessee General Assembly allocate one half of the Real Estate Transfer Act to the county where the tax was collected on a reoccurring basis. Whereas for many years, the state of Tennessee has imposed a tax of thirty seven cents for a hundred dollars in values for approval of the publicly recording documents evidencing all transfers of realty moved by deed, court deed, decree, partition deed, or other instruments evidence of transfer of any interest in real estate. And whereas this tax, although this tax is collected locally and is currently remitted to the state, and the revenue is not made available for use by local officials to address needs in the community where the tax is collected. And whereas the county governments have few revenue options available to them for funding the many crucial governmental services mandated by state law and are therefore largely dependent on property tax to fund these services. And whereas county governments have been fiscally disciplined, allowing Tennessee to remain a low property tax burden state. However, county budgets are increasingly strained by factors such as inflation, challenges in recruiting and retaining qualified staff, and requirement for many state mandates like increasing teacher compensation. And whereas many counties are experiencing rapid population growth as families are choosing to move to Tennessee and settle in its communities, adding to the demand for county services and infrastructure which are necessary to maintain the quality of life of all Tennessee that is affected and preserved. And whereas the state continues to experience revenue collection in excess of budgeted estimates, allocating one half of the Real Estate Transfer Act on a reoccurring basis to the county where it's collected, would take pressure off local property taxes and allow for investment in infrastructure and services without unduly burdening state finances and without increasing the rate of this tax. Therefore, be it resolved that Hawkins County hereby requests that one half of the pack collected pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated sixty seven dash four dash four oh nine be shared with the county where collected on a reoccurring basis. Be it further resolved that the Chairman of this county legislative body and the County Clerk certify and forward this resolution to the members of the Tennessee General Assembly representing this county.
I've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Palmer, Second Commissioner Gibson. Any discussion or questions on this? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I understand that we were requesting to deflection of half of those taxes. Do we have any plans for what those money could be earmarked for?
Actually, the bill that's going into the legislature in Nashville this, this week will direct that money toward transportation, roads, things like that, unless they change it. That's, I've talked to legislators all last week, and that's what it's standing at right now.
Okay, so we could use that for like a bridge?
I'm sorry.
We could use that for a bridge as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it, I don't know the exact amount, but, you know, it's half. We're collecting that tax, and we deserve something for that, so I think they're going to put it toward transportation, but we'll have to wait and see. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right, motion carried. It's twenty twenty five oh one oh three, introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, that is twenty seventh day of January twenty twenty five. Resolution in reference, approval for Hawkins County Veterans Service Officers to lease a Kia Sarah MA four thousand WXY multiple function copier for forty eight months through the Great American Financial Service, whereas Hawkins County Veterans Service Office has a current lease through the Great American Financial Service for a copier, whereas proposed contract reduces the monthly cost of two thirty three forty seven and provides an upgrade in new units, and therefore be it resolved that Hawkins County Mayor DeWitt is authorized to sign the lease agreement for safe copy. Mr. Chairman, I say...
All right, motion on the floor from Commissioner Barker, Second Commissioner Gill. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All right, resolution passes. Twenty twenty five oh one oh four, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, that is twenty seventh day of January twenty twenty five. Resolution in reference, approval of standard mileage reimbursement rate increased to seventy cents per mile taken February one twenty twenty five, as per state rates. Whereas the county recognizes the state rate for mileage reimbursement as the gap to county reimbursement rate for all county departments. And whereas effective January one twenty twenty five, the state of Tennessee is increasing to seventy cents per mile, and therefore be it resolved, approval will be given by the county commission to adopt the state mileage rate effective February one twenty twenty five.
Motion, Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Alvin. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right, the resolution passes. Twenty twenty five oh one oh five, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
Resolution in reference, to the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, that is twenty seventh day of January twenty twenty five. Resolution in reference, budget amendment general fund. Mr. Chairman, I say...
Got a motion from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Gill. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Thirteen yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Twenty twenty five oh one oh six, introduced by Commissioner Palmer.
Mr. Chairman, this motion would need to be amended to represent, to reflect what we amended to in the last meeting.
Correct. Go ahead and make that amendment.
I'm motion, I move to amend that to decrease the fund from two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and twenty five thousand out of solid waste. Mr. Chairman, can we get the resolution on the floor first, and then we'll...
Sure. Motion on the floor, Commissioner Palmer, Second Commissioner Roach. Now, any commit, any comments or questions?
He's got to read the resolution. He's got to read the resolution. He's not read the resolution. To the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, that is twenty seventh day of January twenty twenty five. Following budget amendment for being requested, as listed below, as amended in the budget committee, we're increasing two hundred and fifty thousand into the construction for the solid waste fund, increasing it out of the unamended fund downs in solid waste. We amended that in the budget to two hundred and twenty five thousand.
So, everything on this page that says two hundred and fifty thousand is now two hundred and twenty five thousand if this amendment passes. Any further questions or comments on this? Okay, so we're voting on the amendment only. Yes is to reduce it, no is to keep it the same.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question to speak to. Didn't come up.
Okay, we hadn't voted yet. Go ahead and speak.
The solid waste committee, we spent considerable amount of time discussing how much money we would need to do this project. And while we knew that hopefully it wouldn't take two hundred and fifty thousand, we went ahead and appropriated. Why did we do that? We did that because when we get at the middle of May and we need more money, and, and we don't have the money appropriated to finish the job, then we're going to go past the date when that solid waste overrun sixty six may be shut down. So, I, I just hope we don't run out of money. And I'm confident maybe that we've got enough money for two twenty five. But I, I don't see any reason why we're voting on this, because we did it because of the reason. That reason was we needed to get the job done before July one. And if we have to come back and get more money, we're going to be out of the creek.
Thank you.
It was my understanding, that budget committee being, the reason that they voted to reduce it was basically based on responsibility. They had found a better deal on the stone than was initially anticipated and showed good faith instead of allocating a larger sum of money that they didn't think they were going to need to do, and they were going to sit that money to the back and just allocate what they thought they were going to need, going off the basis of the new price per stone. Because initially, they were talking of it being, I can't remember the exact, it was forty something, and it went down to twenty five essentially per load, if I remember correctly. They might be able to correct me, but...
Per ton.
Yeah, per ton. So, I, I thought the reason they reduced it was actually responsible, to show good faith for not wasting money.
You're correct why that was done. Thank you. Commissioner Palmer.
Mr. Chairman, Dave spoke on what I was questioning about.
Any other questions? We're voting on the amendment to reduce the amount to two hundred and twenty five thousand. Yes is to reduce it, no is to keep it to two fifty.
Eleven yes, two no, one abstain.
Okay, that, that amendment is, is passed. Now, we're going to go back and vote on the resolution as amended. Got a motion from Commissioner Palmer, Second Commissioner Roach. Any questions on the, on the resolution as amended? We're already voting, I'm sorry.
I'm not just...
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Barrett.
Well, I, I was wanting to...
You need to vote, sir.
On, on the resolution as amended.
Resolution as amended.
We, we don't have discussion on that?
We asked for it, and nobody said anything.
I, I had a hand up, too.
But they, they were already voting at that point.
Mr. Barrett, I'd like to recognize Mr. Barrett.
All right.
Okay, if everybody agrees. I watched, I watched Mr. Bobo take, take the recording of the meeting. Appreciate Mr. Bobo doing that. And...
Mike, can you speak closer?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Yes, I watched the, the recording of the minutes, of the meeting with the solid waste committee, and there was a lot, in my opinion, there was a lot of numbers hosed out. There was different price quotes on the fencing. One person, I believe, quoted, got a price quote on an eight-foot fence. Another person got a quote on a six-foot fence. There was, I didn't really hear any specific specifications on the fence. What I quoted fence for an acre, another one got a quote for two-thirds of an acre. There was discussion regarding the type of gate, single gate, double gate, that had wheels on it, it was sliding gate, just back and forth. Then the discussion went to, to rocks, number sixty seven rock, number sixty seven rock. There was all kinds of different price quote regarding the, the tonnage and the cost on the rocks. You know, and there was discussion on if the price included the haul bill. You know, I heard tonnage on rocks costing anywhere from, I think, nineteen dollars, about what, almost thirty dollars a ton. The haul bill went from sixty five cents... from sixty-five cents, uh, per mile, sixty-five cents, sixty-seven cents per mile, all the way up to five dollars per load. So, you know, to me, there was a lot of confusing information back and forth on the, the set. Uh, one thing I did pick up on, through the recording, uh, it was taken, estimated to take thirteen thousand ton of rock. Do you need them aside? To do it. Uh, so, I calculated thirteen, thirteen thousand ton of rock, that's the lowest price that I had heard during the discussion, which was nineteen dollars, and just for the rock only, my interpretation of the nineteen dollars, just purchased the rock only, you would need two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars just to purchase the rock. So, I don't see, I don't see how, if the rocks, except when it costs two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, you know, then you throw in spreading rock, packing rock, uh, you know, I, I, there's half, I believe, three hundred thousand dollars, but I, I, I just don't see how two hundred, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will cover. I don't see how two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will cover. But, uh, anyway, uh, on the flip side of that, I, I took two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, the, uh, immediate amount, I divided that to, uh, a nineteen dollars a ton, and you're only gonna be able to purchase, estimated, eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-two ton of rock, estimate, that you're gonna need thirteen thousand, so you're gonna be short there. On the high side of it, of the, uh, tonnage, you take two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars at the high price, thirty, thirty dollars a ton, then you're only gonna be able to buy seven thousand five hundred ton of rock. So, you know, to me, the numbers, the numbers and estimates and stuff is, it's all over the place.
I have the, the sheet that was given out at the meeting, committee meeting. The price of stone from bulked materials is forty eighty-eight per ton. A rough estimate of the cost of the parking lot stone is approximately sixty, sixty-six thousand dollars. So, this came from Joe Parrott, the engineer. I don't know where the figures you have were, were obtained from, other than listening to the meeting, but this is what we had in front of us at that meeting, so I just wanted to clarify that. Commissioner Palmer.
Commissioner Barrett, the, um, bounce off what Victor DeWitt is saying. The cost of the fencing between thirty-five thousand and forty-five thousand, based on who is selected to install the fence at the high mark, that is at an acre. If we stay under an acre, T-Deck not involved, and we don't have to go to certain things. The stone, that is also dependent on how much stone comes involved when we get some excavation on that hillside. In East Tennessee, we do have a lot of stone in our dirt, so that can also offset some of the costs. Uh, Mr. Lilly, I believe, is.
I am.
Um, would you like to come up and help speak on some of this, since you're not being also.
Well, as much as I can, I will. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Gilliam said it best earlier. You need to have people who have done it before, and I have not. So, that's why we had Joe, that's why we hired an engineer. The estimate he came in with was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I understand the budget committee, um, because we did get, we do get a little better price, which the state did through the highway department for rock. So, I think Joe's looking at this in worst case scenario, the fencing difference, we need a six plus one fence, that's what we use at all our convenience centers, that's a six-foot fence with a single row of barbed wire across the pond. Joe hasn't got folks for eight-foot fences, that's why you're seeing the difference in the fence books. And the size of the lot, two-thirds of an acre would be much longer to lot than any of our current convenience centers now. I also mentioned the gates, I'd like to have, I think they call them gantry gates, that slide back and forth. Those are fairly expensive gates, three thousand dollars or a little more a piece. If we go with the old style swing gates, they just cuts and cost, you know. So, as I said, that's why we have, uh, that's why we need people that have done it, because I'm in the dark, really. I'm trying to get, gather as much information as I can, and, uh, you know, I talked to Mr. Parrott today, we've already got the site survey done, the topographic survey done, he's almost complete with the, the grade plan, he's working, continuing to work on the site plan, which is the layout, um, there's also a turn lane plan, permits that he's, um, in the middle of working on, and he will be ready to put out the grade work bid in a matter of a week, week or so. That's another thing. When it's that grade work starts, we must drill any holes, we don't know what's in that ground. I mean, we're, we're going in and we think we've got a lot of good, good topsoil there, and, but, you know, I worked in the landfill business for many years, and they start digging holes and finding pinnacles of rocks, you know, additional cost. And I think, um, Mr. Palmer said, said it right, we're on a timeline, that deadline, and if we exceed that and run out of money, one thirteen will close down, and the people will have to go to another, another side until we get the new side open. That's really all I can answer on that. At a minimum, we've gotta get to two twenty-five through today, because we need to start working. We need to start paying bills. Mr. Trent.
I would like to recognize Ms. Christina, if that's who that was, I think.
Yes.
Public needs to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, yes, our group came up with some questions, uh, at our meeting last week. One of them was, are we excavating all four acres of the property in the purchase, only, only the section four that we just picked? Um, are there bids going out for these various things, or is it all contracted under one and two?
Yeah, right here. That one's here. Would you like me to answer?
Yeah.
That's part of what Mr. Parrott is doing, so he's gonna prepare, once we get, well, we have to have money approved before we can actually put a bid out. So, once, once we have money approved, we'll be a bid, work bid for grade work, which may include compacting the dirt and laying the stone. And then we'll do a bid for fence. You know, concrete pads, electrical work that we need done. So, yes, it's, it's not gonna be a one large bid, it will be kind of cut up into sections, so we can hopefully get the best price possible, and not, not just have one contractor that's gonna, you know, reball the benefits of the building, of building out.
There will be bids, except states, state statute says, we can't let out bids until we have the money in place to pay for them. So, that's what, we're just trying to make a budget amendment tonight to move some money.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, I respect my colleagues, Mr. Palmer, and others on the budget committee, but I feel like it has been the best interest of this project, that if they withdrew their resolution, and leave it at two fifty. Uh, we, we don't know what's coming down the line, not just like the man in this segment. And it's nothing personal, I love you, and I think you're a great asset to county commissioners.
Well, I appreciate you, Mr. Collins. This is the exact concern I brought up in the voting meeting too, um, that we have the funds in, in the solid waste fund available to pay for this, that does not interfere with proper taxes, wheel tax, does not interfere with taxes from nobody.
And if we don't use it, it's gonna go back.
Exactly, and the reason I voted for it in budget committee was in good, because we were, we didn't know we had a price increase on rock. Um, I was hesitant about that, but I do agree with you, I think it needs to stay at two fifty, and, you know, worth bringing that number down. So, I'm okay with withdrawing on that amendment and leaving it at two fifty.
We've already voted on the amendment.
Well, I thought we did, yeah.
When we can amend back to two fifty. Will I make that motion to amend back to two fifty?
All right, hang on just a minute, the extra thacker. Thanks, uh, Mr. Lewis. Commissioner Thacker. Okay, Commissioner Trent, you're backed up. I'm sorry, Jason. Jason's next.
Okay.
Thank you. So, when we met in the budget committee, we reviewed the quote that was given to us. The quote that was given to us was based on a projected cost of, and I do believe it was forty dollars per ton of rock, and the simple thing was to ask someone in our county who buys a lot of rock, how much he pays for rock. And that's our highway superintendent who happened to be there, and he said, we pay considerably less. So, when we actually asked for the, the amount that they pay, I think it was nineteen dollars, um, I wanted to drop lower than two twenty-five, and the reason being, because if you're projecting at a forty dollar a ton cost, and you know you're not gonna give forty dollars a ton for that, then why allocate the money to do that? Because I, I know at the end of the day, we're county commissioner and we work for local government, but I don't really work for local government, I, I represent the voters, and I don't know when we've ever said, your government, take the high quote and let, just give us the money back if you don't use it all. I don't, I don't know that that works all the time. So, why not go ahead and limit ourselves and show good faith, as Robbie said earlier, to our taxpayers, because I, I, I don't know if y'all realize, this last budget season absolutely whooped us. And if we don't show some good effort at trying to cut some costs, and you know what, if we allocate two hundred fifty, if we allocate five hundred, and it costs two hundred, and we get three hundred back, I don't believe anybody in this local government's cricket, I don't believe anybody's taking any money, I don't believe anything like that's gonna happen. But at some point, we have to say, you're going to have to not buy the Cadillac, you're gonna have to sell and buy the Chevrolet. So, that's the reason why we brought the quote back. And at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, when you figure, based on what Mr. Jones told us the price of rock was, we actually increased the amount to twenty-five instead of, I believe nineteen is what you told us, Mr. Jones, if I remember correctly. We actually increased that amount over what he told us he pays for rock, so that we would have a cushion. So, with two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we still built in a cushion based on the quote, Mr. Barrett, that we were given by Mr. Parrott. So, to say that we are not building in a cushion is inaccurate, we are. Actually, we're probably building in more of a cushion, we're just using more accurate numbers that was given to us by someone that buys rocks. So, with that said, I absolutely will vote against any amendment to go back to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, keep it at two hundred and twenty-five, uh, based on what we see, based on the evidence that we collect, that two hundred and twenty-five will be enough to get the job done, and if it's not, then we're paying too much for supplies, and we could get it at a rate that the county did, that the state did. So, that's my two cents, that's the reason why we vote.
Commissioner Trent.
With all due respect, I think we bought the Cadillac and we bought the property, that's, that's in the year of the day, so that, that's about, that's approved. Mr. Lilly, I have a question. Has Mr., I heard you touch on this just a minute. Uh, I worked in engineering for twenty years, I'm an engineer, don't have an engineer degree, I've done business today, but you're not moving it. Are, you know, are you saying that they're not, they haven't done any core drillings? They don't have a contractor to come in and do core drillings to see what?
Has it now, no core, no, we didn't have?
No. And they're not gonna need it?
We can't do it without moving the money over.
Okay. That's not the way we did it at Eastland, but we're not.
Well, Eastland could spend their money before they got it, but we can't.
Well, maybe use plain money, though. Maybe, maybe when I.
They are not playing by state government rules.
Well, I don't care whose rules you're playing by. When you start working on property and you're gonna build things and, and excavate and you think you do normally, you do for yourself, you might as well stay back, I'm not stupid.
Commissioner Barrett.
Well, you know, like I said, I just, you know, I watched the, the tape, the video recording of the meet, of the meeting, because I remember seeing Mr. Bobo's tape, the recording, and according to the transcript of the, of the thing, somebody asked how many tons of rock was estimated to need, and he come out thirteen thousand ton, and somebody at the meeting said, wow. Anyway, long story short, you take thirteen thousand ton of rock at nineteen dollars a ton, it's gonna cost you two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Now, I'm not advocating raise, raise the bid price, go down, whatever, I'm just saying, if what I think I heard on that tape is correct, then it's gonna cost you two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. You know, I wouldn't have to solid, at the solid waste committee meeting, but, you know, seven people, plus whoever was there, attendants, uh, you know, play the tape, thirteen, thirteen, thirteen thousand.
Okay, I think the point's made, Commissioner Barrett. Anything else?
That's all.
Set, uh, Mr. Barker.
I have a question.
All right, all for questions. Now, we want to leave, the amendment to go to two twenty-five has been passed. We're voting on the resolution as amended at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Questions have been called, so let's go ahead and vote.
Twelve yes, one no, one abstain.
All right, resolution carries. Twenty twenty-five oh one oh seven, Commissioner Roach.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session, that is twenty-seventh day of January twenty twenty-five, uh, budget amendment, other special revenue, park fund one twenty-eight. Mr. Chairman, I say.
Motion from Commissioner Roach, second Commissioner Gibson. Any discussion or questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that resolution carries. Twenty twenty-five oh one oh eight, Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session, that is twenty-seventh day of January twenty twenty-five, resolution in reference, budget amendment, highway fund. Mr. Chairman, I say.
All right, we got a motion, Commissioner Roach, second Commissioner Collins. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that resolution passes. Twenty twenty-five oh one oh nine, Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session, that is twenty-seventh day of January twenty twenty-five, resolution in reference, general purpose school fund budget amendment, whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the general purpose school fund, and requests approval as set amendment by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. And therefore be it resolved at county board of commissioners' ma, meeting in the regular session, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, long reverence, passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I say.
Motion from Commissioner Barker, second Commissioner Alvis. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Chairman, may I take my vote?
You need to abstain.
Yes, please.
Directly reflect that Commissioner Roach abstained, please.
Give us just a second.
Thank you, sir. If you wouldn't have became mine when I called it before you announced the, uh, I called it just before I announced the vote.
Go ahead. All right.
Thirteen yes, one abstain.
All right, that resolution passes. Twenty twenty-five oh one ten, Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session, that is twenty-seventh day of January twenty twenty-five, resolution in reference, central cafeteria fund budget amendment. Resolution in reference, Central Cafeteria Fund budget amendment. Whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the Central Cafeteria Fund, and now requests approval of set amendment by the Hawkins County Board of Commission. Therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Commission meeting in regular session, January 27, 2025, long record is passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I solemnly.
Motion from Commissioner Barker, Second Commissioner Gibson. Any comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
13 yes, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. 2025-01-11, Commissioner Barker.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, member of the Hawkins County Board of Commission, in regular session, met this 27th day of January 2025. Resolution in reference, School Transportation Fund budget amendment. Whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the School Transportation Fund, is now requesting approval of set amendment to the Hawkins County Board of Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Commission meeting in regular session, January 27, 2025, long record is passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I solemnly.
Motion from Commissioner Barker, Second Commissioner Gillum. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote.
13 yes, 1 abstain.
All right. Now, on 2025-01-12, there was one inadvertently left off, so you have a corrected copy in front of you. All right, motion, Commissioner Gibson, Second Commissioner Breton. Any questions or comments? Go ahead and vote.
14 yes.
All right, noted, is approved. 2025-01-01, out of order. I need a motion from the floor to suspend the rules. Motion from Commissioner Gibson, Second Commissioner Gillum. Any questions or comments?
Give us a second. Motion by Gibson, second by Gillum.
Yeah, Gibson, Gillum, to suspend the rules.
All right, thank you.
All right, with no questions, let's go ahead and vote.
12 yes, 2 no.
All right, rules have been suspended. 2025-01-01, introduced by Commissioners Gillum, Palmer, and Gibson.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session, met this 27th day of January 2025. Resolution in reference, Hawkins County Office of Governor, Leaders, Education Freedom Act. Whereas Hawkins, the Hawkins County Commission is funding body for our local public school system, and whereas the Constitution of the State of Tennessee requires that Tennessee, that the Tennessee General Assembly provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of the system of free public schools, with no mention of the maintenance or support of private schools. And whereas Hawkins County schools provide education to all students regardless of background, need, or ability. And whereas Hawkins County schools provide an array of specialized programs of study, including special education services and career technical education designed to meet the needs of the local workforce, which are invaluable for meeting both individual needs and the requirement by the Tennessee State Constitution to provide a free public education. And whereas many Hawkins County students are economically disadvantaged and lack the ability to overcome the multiple barriers of accessing private education beyond basic tuition costs, including but not limited to fees, uniform requirements, meals, and transportation. And whereas vouchers eliminate public accountability by funneling public funds to private institutions that do not face state-approved academic standards, do not make budgets public, do not adhere to open meetings and records laws, do not publicly report on student achievement, and do not face the public accountability requirements in major federal laws, including special education. And whereas vouchers give more choice to private schools, not students and parents, as they can deny admission for any reason or no reason at all, allowing public funds to be used to potentially discriminate against disadvantaged or disabled students. And whereas this lack of accountability is fiscally irresponsible and inherently unfair to Hawkins County teachers, administrators, and other educational staff who dedicate their lives and work tirelessly to meet outlandish and unattainable accountability standards imposed upon them by the State of Tennessee. And whereas Hawkins County public school teachers and administrators have begged the governor and state legislators for more resources and removal of regulations that create barriers they face in educating their students, but instead are being met with a bill that is attempting to abandon public school teachers, administrators, staff, and students. And whereas Hawkins County is committed to maintaining local control of the Hawkins County public school system to ensure it reflects the needs and values of our community, and therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Commission expresses its opposition to the Governor's Education Freedom Act, as well as any other voucher legislation, due to the detrimental impacts these programs will have on our students, schools, and community. Additionally, the Hawkins County Commission expresses its opposition to the governor's attempt to attach this legislation to hurricane relief funds in an effort to strong-arm legislators to vote for the Education Freedom Act. Mr. Chairman, I solemnly.
And we've got a motion on the floor, Commissioner Gillum, Second Commissioner Breton, Commissioner Roach.
So, I guess I'm a little uniquely qualified to talk about this, and of course, anything that I say doesn't represent tonight, my role as an educator. I am an educator. I've been an educator since the day of 10. I want to say first off, I, Mr. Chisholm and I had this conversation earlier, and he said it tonight, that if it's increasing competition, it's a good thing. And I would say, if it's competitive, bring it on. I'll compete with any private, so I'll put any teacher I got against any private school out there, any day of the week. But it's not competitive. That's the problem. When you tell me that I have to have a third-grade child, and I'll speak as a parent for a second, sat across the table in dinner one night when my youngest stepson was in third grade, and he frustratedly said with tears in his eyes, "I'm stupid," because he thought he was going to fail, because he was going to fail the TCAT. Do you have to do that in private school? Do you receive a voucher? Are you going to hold kids back if they don't pass the TCAT? No, probably not, because you're not going to take TCAT. Here's the thing. If you want to include accountability into this bill that has been thrust upon us by those in the General Assembly, then you need to put the same level of accountability on those private schools that you do our public ones. Or, you need to lift some of those restrictions on public schools and make it equal with private. If you take a child that's a student with disabilities and van roll on day one at school, you shouldn't be able to, two months later, tell them to go back to their public school because they can't behave properly. You should be able to include interventions the same way the public schools do. If you are going to take a test that a child has to sit for 120 minutes, do two different parts on one day, tell that child in third grade and possibly fourth grade that they're not going to get promoted to the next grade level if they fail. Now, granted, there are appeals and summer school they can go to. There's a process they can go through. But if you're going to do that to public schools, then hold these private schools accountable and do the same thing. Lastly, I want to say, because I don't want to get, I'm too much of a soapbox. If they pass this, I believe that it will eventually fall to the local school districts. I don't believe the state can sustain an ongoing program that's growing with vouchers year after year after year. It's going to fall on local districts eventually. And if you don't know already, go look at some of our buildings. We have infrastructure needs that are desperate. They are absolutely desperate. And we can't take a high level of government telling a low level of government how to use their tax revenue anymore. That's what the federal government does to the state all the time. Why would we let the state do it to the local group? So, I want to say, I want to go on record saying I absolutely oppose any voucher legislation that the state would pass, first off. But if they pass it, bring it on if it's competitive, but make it competitive. Because right now, they are hamstringing public schools.
Mr. Palmer.
Jackson, I echo all your concerns. My wife is a special education teacher. And, what Governor Lee is trying to do, and I want to make sure he hears this very loud and very clear, I've told Gary Hicks and Bobby Hartner, pass this message along to him. What he is doing is ethically wrong. If you can give money, if you can tie money to this voucher bill for infrastructure and maintenance of your public school system, and you can give $2,000 bonuses to teachers, and you can guarantee that schools will not be penalized monetarily if a student leaves their district, then why not go ahead and do it? Don't tie it to a voucher bill just because you didn't get your way last year. And for those who out there who think this won't feed coming back to the public school system, oh, it does. If you have a student that needs related services to go to a private school, they don't pay for it, the public school system does. Hawkins County school system will pay for it. Governor Lee needs to make sure he understands that people in Tennessee do not like this, and we're not just a bunch of dumb hillbillies. So, I appreciate every one of the commissioners, if you would vote to oppose this. And our citizens need to be called state representatives and let them know.
Mr. Gibson.
So, I agree with the comments that are said, and I'm not going to repeat those. But if you would be willing, I'd like to ask Mr. Hicks just a couple of questions. If you don't care to stop here. So, Mr. Levon, you know, we talked about how this could be impactful a future, a few years down the road. Could you speak to what the financial impact will look like immediately if this passes?
Yeah, I would like to lead off by saying I appreciate the comments this evening. I think no one is afraid of competition as long as the field is equal. You put the Chiefs from the NFL against our volunteer Falcons, and you call it football. By all stretch of imagination, it's a football game. They're probably following the same rules, probably following the same minutes possession rules, interceptions, turnovers, that type of stuff. But, the financial backing and a lot of the other things that have come with this voucher effort are equitable with what that Falcons team would face going up against the Chiefs. The cost benefit, or the cost considerations are going to fall on the local level at some point, in my opinion. Right now, we have 70% funding for public education in the State of Tennessee from the states and feds, 30% from the local level. Ours is about 26%, I think, here in Hawkins County, local level. When they say it holds harmless, and your funding model is based on a per pupil ratio of funds that each local education agency is receiving in order to meet those educational needs, and those students leave your system, and that's a whole harmless, that bill has got to fall somewhere for somebody to pay for. And I think the scary thing for me as a taxpayer and the director of schools here in Hawkins County, is that at the local level, I think that's going to incrementally rise if something like this constructive bill will pass. 144 to 250 million annually is what it's estimated, and there's a big range there, depending on what's thrown into the cap out there. We have asked for facilities and operations help, because the average age of a school building in the State of Tennessee from southwest to northeast is about 62 years old. That means there's some that are well over 100. That means there's some that are well under 20. But the average is 62 years old. Ours is right there, 62 to 65 years old, average age in Hawkins County schools. We have been asking, I've been here six years, I've helped sponsor legislation to get gaming proceeds, online gaming proceeds from when that was passed several years ago, to help the local education agencies in each county, especially rural and Forest County firsts, to help maintain their buildings. It doesn't do any good to use money to put window film on front windows when our roofs are leaking. But the only avenue we have right now for giving help is to come before this body and to say, "We need to pass another bond." And our taxpayers pay for that. When they're sitting on this money and they're attaching it to a bill, all of a sudden, it wasn't important two years ago. Last year, well, we may be able to help you with some facility money if you vote for the vouchers. This year, it's in there with relief money. And they don't even think enough about the people, the public, my opinion, not director schools right now, but my opinion as a taxpayer, they don't think enough of the taxpayers and the general legislation right now to take it to a regular session. They got to hide it in a special session. So, a lot of what was said is absolutely true. How is this fiscally conservative when there's no plan that I've seen in any of the bills, any of the stuff you read online for ongoing payment of this? Starts out with 20,000 students. 10,000 of those who are deemed the lowest income of students in the State of Tennessee have to be within a 300% range of poverty level. You know what 300% of poverty, 300% above poverty level equates to a family? Who is this voucher going to benefit the most? It is not going to benefit the poor students. It's not going to benefit those with special needs. It's not going to benefit those that have behavioral issues that the public school has to take, because we take everybody that comes to our front door. It's going to serve those who are already taking that initiative and who have the means to go to private school. Homeschool came up. We work very, very well with our homeschool community. We have 200 roughly students in Hawkins County that are currently on homeschool. We work with them every year. Some of them play sports in their zone schools because we have a great agreement with them. We've increased CTE offerings nearly 200% over the last six years, because that's what our community needs. We give parents a choice right now. Do I agree with everything that we have to teach or how we have to test in the State of Tennessee? No, but it's a law, and I'm challenged to follow the law. If we want to do something to help education, bring it back to the local level and help us, let us, more importantly, make decisions based on what we know of our students and their needs here in Hawkins County. When there are inequalities at the get-go of a bill like this, such as no enrollment accountability, I can turn your way if your special needs by just simply saying, "We don't have the staff or the ability to accommodate or intervene." I don't have to publish my assessment scores. And by the way, what's the purpose in putting a black eye on public education the last two years, other than to gain support for this? We have met and have tried to meet some of the highest state standards in the nation in Tennessee over the last eight to 10 years. And what do we get? We get legislators who say 67% of third graders can't read. That's not true. 67% can't read at the exceptional reading level as measured by the state tests, which are some of the toughest in the nation. But I, like Jason, would put any of my teachers, any of my principals, any of my assistants against anything that you would find in private schools, and that's how it ought to be. If we weren't hiring the highest quality with what we could have, with what we have as far as resources, we're not going to be competitive. But if the rules are the same, competition brings out the best. I say level the playing field and bring it on. But this voucher bill, as written right now, does not do that. It falls well short. You talk about a soapbox, I'll be on the soapbox. Why special session? Why include it with immigration and safety, hurricane relief? That was brought up earlier. It's not just hurricane relief. Look at what's on the agenda. It's current, past, current, and future relief for our county. Marx did the right thing by saying yes, because his job for the leadership of the county is to protect our fiscal solvency. He was the last one to sign that of the seven, but he felt so wrong. That was a term used earlier, leverage. That's not right. If between 65 and 82% of the state wants this voucher bill as written, then take it to general session. Let everybody be on record. Let the testimony be on record. Let the voting be record, roll call record. But no, it's going to special session. I think the last thing we've asked for and have been consistently told, no, there's not enough funds. We've asked for facility help. We've asked for leveling, helping us remain competitive with city systems. We all received the same funding, but city systems and those with higher tax revenues can put that into and support their teachers at a higher rate. We have a record of training some of the best teachers in our. We have a record of training some of the best teachers in our northeast region in Hawkins County, and then we lose them five or six years into the process because they can get paid elsewhere at a higher. But I guarantee you, the family bill, the support is none greater than what you'll find in Hawkins County, and the teachers that have gone to the places will echo that largely. But we've asked for those things, the facility money, the salary equity. One thing that's been said is, while we've given you money for our teachers' raises the last three or four years, do you know that on average that pays between sixty-five and seventy percent of what's needed just to pay our teachers what's mandated by the state? It's not a hundred percent. And we're trying to do a little more, because we're trying to close that gap, all while working to remain fiscally solid. So long answer short, I'm not in favor of this. There's a litany of reasons why, and it's not just because I'm the director of the public school system. I happen to, I happen to be pro-choice on schools. I think parents ought to be able to choose, and as was pointed out earlier, they currently can. Do I think they ought to have a right to maybe be tax exempt if they don't pay into the tax into the public school system and maybe divert that somewhere else? That's to be decided down the road, but if the rules remain the same between the entities receiving that money, I say bring it on. I echo Mr. Roach's comments. Right now, this is far from fair.
Mr. Gill.
Have you finished, John?
Yeah.
So first of all, I appreciate you, Mr. Hickson. I'll tell you, going back to twenty twenty, well before I was involved in politics, or you probably knew who I was, I called Mr. Hickson with concerns about school debt with COVID and all that. You're very responsive then, and of course, very responsive now. My point in saying that is this, I've read a lot of comments online that, oh, you're just, you know, public schools are trying to protect their pocketbooks, right, and they're trying to rid some things from locals that's relevant here to Hawkins County. And I'll tell you, my experience with our public school system, I have three children, from high school, middle school, elementary school, all of them have been in Hawkins County. My experience in the education system, it's always been student-focused, and these guys, from Matt Hickson all the way down to teachers' assistants, spend all their time jumping through hoops and jumping over hurdles set in front of them by state government, trying to do what's right for kids. That's what they have to do, and it's a shame. Mr. Roach, when he was my kid at high school, we had some things, he was on top of it. I mean, like that, take care of his students, and in that case, it happened to be my kid. These guys are jumping through hoops all the time, and it's so funny, when it comes to fixing education, the first thing they want to do is listen to rich lobbyists in Nashville who are giving them money. That's what affects education, but never mind their employees who have been screaming. I mean, jumping up and down, half of them are leaving the field. I could name you at least ten teachers that I know personally, that if they had the opportunity to quit today, and it has nothing to do with their bosses, don't have nothing to do with central office, has everything to do with the system in which they're forced to work that is set against them, and it's a shame that they would then be taught to compete against people who are set free and say, well, why aren't you doing what they do? It's demotivating, and it's downright dirty, and I sure don't appreciate it, whether it's Republican governor, I'm as Republican as a kind. If I was any more Republican, I'd have an elephant as pet, but I tell you what, I don't care if it's Republican governor, Democrat governor, or the Whig Party governor, it's wrong, and I don't like it, and I don't, that's why I am voting yes on this, and I would appreciate all my colleagues doing the same. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote, please.
Thirteen yes, one no.
All right, that resolution carries. Okay, motion to adjourn, may I? Motion Gibson, Second Roach to adjourn, please vote on your pad.